Check.
Do you wanna try the French translation?
Check one, two, one, two, three, check, check.
Check one, two, one, two, three. Check, 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 okay, but I'm not trying to make this sound anyway. So I'm gonna have to switch the cat list, I guess. Okay, going over to French. I think, I don't know if you can hear me. I think on the French.
'Cause on the French, I'm talking here and you're not giving me any thumbs up or anything. Check one, two, one, two, three, check, check, check. Check one, two, one, two, three, check, 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 on the French console again, French channel, you don't seem to be getting me. Check, 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 alright, I'm coming back.
Okay, so here I am, here I am on the English. Testing one, two, three, testing one, two, three on the English, testing one, two, three, is that a thumbs up? Yes, okay, going to the French. I flip back to the English, 'cause I can't tell if you've caught me or not on the first console, so I'm now on the English, testing one, two, three on the English, testing. One, two, three on the English, testing, one, two, three on the English, no thumbs up or anything?
Est-ce que je peux recevoir les signaux en français ? Je vais passer à l'anglais. Ah, oui, c'est l'anglais, mais pas le français. Ok, donc je suis prêt à revenir là-bas ? Ok.
Test 1, 2, 3. Test 1, 2, 3 pour Matt. Test 1, 2, 3 sur l'anglais, je suppose.
Oui.
1, 2, 1, 2, 1, 2. Allez, ça ressemble super heureux !
Vous avez un accent basse en français ?
Oui.
Et quand je change mon micro ?
Y a-t-il des problèmes ?
Il y a des problèmes ?
Est-ce que c'est le prix de la tasse ?
Maintenant sur l'anglais, 1, 2, 1, 2. C'est un pouce en haut que je vois.
Est-ce que vous avez...
Avez-vous des problèmes ? J'ai besoin d'un petit bilan. Je devrais prendre un bilan. Prendre un bilan ?
Oui, je vais revenir.
Non, non.
Test 1, 2.
Ça a été bon.
Vous avez des signes ?
Comment est-ce que vous allez ? Ça va être bien.
On peut aller plus loin.
Oui. Oui.
Ok Amy, mon ami. Je vais sur l'anglais maintenant. Je ne peux pas te voir, mon ami Amy. Je ne peux pas te voir, voilà. Donc maintenant je suis sur l'anglais et l'anglais est cool. Attends une seconde, je vais sur le français. Donc Amy, vous n'avez rien sur le français, correct ? Amy, mon ami ?
Non, elle ne va pas.
Ok, je suis sur l'anglais. Vous voulez que je le réclame ?
Non, tu restes là.
Oui, je vais rester ici. Je suis sur l'anglais maintenant et je suppose que vous n'avez rien. Oui, je suis sur l'anglais et je vais sur le français. Donc quand je parle en français, vous n'avez rien. Donc Matt va faire quelque chose. Donc je parle en anglais maintenant, c'est ce que vous voulez que je fasse ? Oui, vous voulez que je continue à parler en anglais ? Je vais passer au français ? Attends une seconde. Et maintenant je suis revenu sur l'anglais, c'est ok ? Anglais, je suis sur l'anglais, c'est ok ? Oui, ok, bien.
Ok, je suis sur l'anglais. Anglais ? Ok, je vais sur le français.
Inglês. Isso é inglês. Você quer que eu continue falando ou estou pronto? Tudo bem? Você quer que eu continue falando? Isso é inglês. Você quer que eu verifique o francês? Ok, só um segundo.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. If I could ask members of council to...
O Canada, our home and native land. True patriot's love in all thy son's command. Cartant bras s'apportait les pays, ils s'apportaient la croix. Ton histoire est une époque... Is that the thumbs up? Des plus brillants exploits. Okay, good. Thank you.
One, two, 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 two.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. If I could ask members of council to... We'll start the meeting in one minute. I know, they're at the county jail.
Oh, we just recorded a descent on the 385 Sussex.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Bonjour, mesdames et messieurs. Welcome to the City Council meeting on the 27th of May 2015. If those who are able to could please rise for a moment of reflection and remain standing for the National Anthem. Merci beaucoup, thank you. It's now my pleasure to ask councillor Chernoshenko to... There you are. To introduce our special guest who is going to sing our National Anthem. Councillor?
Thank you very much. It is my great pleasure to introduce Betty Ann Bryanton. And I learned that in PEI that's Bintin. But she had to slow it down for the rest of us in Ottawa. So Betty Ann began singing at a young age in the church choir in PEI. At university she studied business but always kept music close by, completing a music minor in voice. Over the years, she has sung solos in many churches and weddings, been a member of top-notch choirs, performed at Centrepoint with Ottawa's Orpheus Musical Theatre Society and the Savoy Society, sung on the NAC stage as a soloist and chorister and won awards in music festival competitions. Betty Ann loves to sing classical music, but in recent years she's been concentrating almost exclusively on vocal jazz. She's heavily involved in the local jazz community as editor of the weekly Jazzworks newsletter and she collaborates with many jazz musicians in town. Recently, she performed with professional guitarist Tim Bednar at Santé Restaurant and is preparing with two other bands for upcoming jazz performances. Betty Ann has lived in Capital Ward since moving to Ottawa in 1998. She works full-time in the information technology field in the federal government. She is very pleased to have the opportunity to sing for us today.
O Canada, our home and native land. True patriot's love in all thy son's command. Cartant bras s'apportait les pays, ils s'apportaient la croix. Ton histoire est une époque, des plus brillants exploits. God keep our land glorious and free. O Canada, we stand on guard for thee. O Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Well, thank you very, very much, Betty Ann. What a wonderful, powerful voice. At this time, I'd like to invite Marie Eve Chaney to the podium for this meeting's City Builder Award presentation. Marie Eve could come forward. And also invite Marie Eve's councillor, Le Conseil Mathieu Fleury. And also as a long-time supporter and having recently moved from his ward, I'd like to invite Marie Eve's past councillor, Tim Tierney, to also join us over here. Welcome. Thank you very much for coming with some family and friends. Recently celebrating the fifth anniversary of the Alive to Strive Kidney Fitness Project's annual race this past April, it's fitting that we have this opportunity to recognize an outstanding member of our community who has helped change the lives of those suffering from chronic kidney disease in our city and beyond. Marie Eve Chaney is one of the founders of the Alive to Strive Kidney Fitness Project as well as a courageous advocate of renal disease awareness and prevention, having been afflicted with kidney disease herself. Marie Eve Chaney est l'une des fondateuses de projet de fond...
Marie Eve Chaney is one of the founders of the Alive to Strive Kidney Fitness Project as well as a courageous advocate of renal disease awareness and prevention, having been afflicted with kidney disease herself.
The Alive to Strive Kidney Fitness Project is a nonprofit organization committed to educating and raising public awareness on the issue of chronic kidney disease and prevention. Through several fundraising and advocacy initiatives, Alive to Strive sets out to assist and educate the more than 2 million Canadians who are affected by chronic kidney disease. Now in its fifth year and growing continually, Alive to Strive's Race Day 2015 raised more than $30,000. As those with chronic kidney disease often lead a sedentary lifestyle which can further complicate or can lead to further complications, Alive to Strive also operates an active living grant program. The grant program allows those living with kidney disease to get active with fellow patients where they can form bonds and support each other through their journey with kidney disease.
The grant program allows those living with kidney disease to get active with fellow patients where they can form bonds and support each other through their journey with kidney disease.
The grant encourages those living with kidney disease to get active, often through something as simple as a quality pair of running shoes, to allow them the tools they need to pursue their goals. Marie Eve's leadership and courage has allowed Alive to Strive Fitness Project to flourish and she truly inspires all those she comes in contact with. Despite her harrowing encounter with kidney disease, Marie Eve turned her experience as a patient into returning to health as an athlete, a university graduate and a very deserving city builder.
Despite her harrowing encounter with kidney disease, Marie Eve turned her experience as a patient into returning to health as an athlete, a university graduate and a very deserving city builder.
Patience, Marie Eve, very much for all the work you're doing. It's great to see a lot of family and friends. There's the wonderful Helen Campbell is in the front row. Thank you, Helen, for all that you have done. And Marie Eve, it's our pleasure on behalf of Tim and Matt to present you with the City Builder Awards.
I had to write it in case I was too nervous. Kidney disease affects 1 in 10 Canadians at the moment, with numbers rising every year. And in most cases, it can be prevented with a healthy lifestyle. We all know that eating well and being active is important to be healthy, both physically and mentally. But when you already have health challenges, it is hard to know where to start, what to do, when everything is already so difficult. Alive to Strive was created in 2011 to help people living with kidney disease get active and stay active. We have been very lucky to have the support of the community, the dialysis units at the Ottawa hospitals and great sponsors and volunteer helping us with the Alive to Strive race every year. It is our sole fundraiser and that's really how we can award these grants for patients. Many of our board and our race committee members are here today with us and this is truly a team award. Together through the Alive to Strive race, we have raised kidney disease awareness across the city, raised thousands of dollars for the Alive to Strive Active Living Grant Program and got hundreds of people active. Most of them are first-time walkers, runners and young families. We have given 90 grants so far in four years. We have seen many people and their changes and how it has impacted them physically and mentally. And two years ago, we started doing a grant, a group training. In this group training, people come out together twice a week, work out, learn how to do stretches and most of the time like things for everyday life. And one of our grant recipient wrote in one of her feedback cards. She wrote, "I have become more confident I can do more with my body. I even took the dog for a short walk up and down the street. I don't know who was more shocked, me or the dog." In only a few weeks, she had built up that strength and confidence to be able to walk the dog. Well, that same lady walked the whole 5K this year at the Alive to Strive race. This is how Alive to Strive can have a positive impact in our community. We believe that through active living, we can help increase the chances for a successful transplant and enhance the quality of life of predialysis and dialysis patients, preventing heart disease, depression, giving them a sense of control on their life, gaining confidence and empowering them... and empowering them by being active in a safe, comfortable environment adapted to them. I would like to thank Mary Watson for this incredible award, councillor Fleury and councillor Tierney. A special thanks as well to the staff of the Home Dialysis Unit for this amazing nomination. Thank you. As well as all the wonderful volunteers I've worked with, whether with the grant programme, with the board, or the race committee, it's really appreciated. Together, we are making a difference, one recipient at a time. Thank you.[635.38][635.38](Applause)
Well, thank you very, very much for those very, very kind and thoughtful words. Roll call please, Madam Deputy Clerk.
Conseillère Minette.
Yes, ma'am.
Councillor Midic.
Here.
Councillor Harder.
Here.
Councillor Wilkinson.
Present.
Councillor Elchantiri.
Present.
Councillor Cadri.
Present.
Councillor Taylor.
Here.
Councillor Shirelli.
Here.
Councillor Agley.
Here.
Councillor Deans.
Here.
Councillor Tierney.
Present.
Conseilier Fleury.
You see.
Councillor Newsbaum.
Present.
Councillor McKenney.
Present.
Councillor Leeper.
Present.
Councillor Brockington.
Here.
Councillor Chernoshenko.
Present.
Cédric Lutier.
Present.
Conseilier Blay.
Present.
Councillor Darousse.
Here.
Councillor Moffatt.
Here.
Councillor Kakush.
Present.
Councillor Hubley.
Here.
Mayor Watson.
You see.
Le Cadamite Ten, Monsieur le Maire.
Merci. adoption de process verbeaux, confirmation amendments from 13th of May 2015, carried. Declarations of interest, including those originally arising from prior meetings, declaration de conflit d'intérêt, none. Communications, as presented in the agenda, regrets, absence, no regrets filed to date. Motion to introduce reports, motion important presentation de rapport, conseiller Tierney et Chernoshenko, s'il vous plaît.
No, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. That the Community and Protective Services Committee report four, Environment Committee report three, Planning Committee report seven, and the Transit Commission report three be received and considered.
On the motion, carried. Committee reports, rapport de comité, Committee and Protective Services Committee report number four, rapport numéro quatre, comité de services communautaires et protection, response to taxi-related council motions of April 2012, réponse aux motions de conseil d'avril 2012 concernant les taxis.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question on this, if you want me to ask now, or you are?
Yeah, is it a brief question? Go ahead.
I apologize, I didn't attend the committee meeting, I was away, but I just want to make sure the enforcement will still take place in the meantime when we are reviewing this, because, Mr. Mayor, we're here in quite a bit of activity, and I don't think we have enough enforcement, so I'd like to hear from staff if it's possible, if the enforcement's going to take place in the meantime.
Through the mayor, to councillor Elchantiri, yes, enforcement is ongoing, and will continue to be ongoing as long as it's legal under the bylaw.
Thank you. So on the report, carried. Next is Environment Committee report number three, rapport numéro trois de comité de l'environnement. Staff comments on the water, wastewater and stormwater rate structure review, commentaire de personnel sur l'examen de barèmes des redévances pour l'eau et les eaux usées et les eaux pluviales. Can we hold that, please?
Okay.
Hold by councillor Hubley. Planning Committee report number seven, rapport numéro sept de comité de l'urbanisme. Zoning bylaw amendment 385 Sussex Drive, modification au règlement de zonage 385 Commaled Sussex. Halt. Hold by councillor Fleury. And we also have a technical amendment on that. Zoning bylaw amendment 187 Metcalf Street, modification au règlement de zonage 187 rue Metcalf. Carried. Bulk consent agenda, does anyone wish to remove anything from the bulk consent agenda? No on the bulk consent agenda is presented? Carried. Disposition of items approved by committee under delegated authority, suite à donner des articles ratifiés par les comités en vertu de pouvoir délégué. Received. And we'll go back now to the first item that was held by councillor Hubley. Environment Committee report number three, councillor, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I just, I have one question, and I have to apologize, I was not able to get to committee to ask the question, but if someone's here to answer a question about this, I'd appreciate it.
So, who will speak?
My question is, for four years now, we've been hearing that the reason that this budget is short, experiencing shortfalls, is because consumption is down. And I'm having difficulty with that explanation, because really, the reason consumption is down is because programs that the city has initiated to reduce consumption, therefore, we should be, I believe, better at forecasting the budget for the water rates. And so I'd like to know what steps we're taking, so that next year we don't have to concur and once again say that consumption is down, therefore...
The first step that we did was we reduced the 2015 budget, the consumption number, to closer reflect what we experienced in 2014. The biggest problem we have with forecasting, though councillors, is rain in the months of July and August. If you look at the consumption on a monthly basis, that's your biggest period of consumption, and if you have a wet summer, it can make a dramatic impact on the overall revenues that are generated. So the intent of this study is to try to get some of that volatility out of there, to make certain that at least a base amount is being collected for each of those services. So that is what the first thing that we did. And our conservation efforts are, yes, are having an impact, but I think it isn't so much what the city's doing, it's what's out there with the industry and the concept of price elasticity for water demand, which we never had expected there to be, but there actually is. When you raise the prices past a certain point, people become more conscious about the use. But new homes that are coming on stream, the water consumption for a new home is a fraction what it is for an older home, just because of new appliances, more water-efficient methods of, within the design overall of the home.
Thank you. Now, within the report, there's talk about going to a fixed rate charge for the storm sewers. Any idea how long that review will take place? Like, when will we here at council see something more on that, and when can residents expect something like that to be implemented?
Thank you for asking that question, because I actually want to take the opportunity to dispel one of the, one of the comments we're hearing outside of City Hall, and that is that we would be considering charging people who are on well water and septic. And that is not the case at all. There's no intention to charge anybody who has their own well and has their own septic system for any sanitary or water services. The storm component of it, we're looking at a variety of ways to collect for the storm services. But we, first thing we need to do is have a better understanding of where those storm costs are incurred in the city, because a large part of the city, it's already on their water bill and they're paying for it, a large part of the city geographically, but not actually in terms of dollars, receive the service and don't have a water bill. So we're looking at all kinds of different ways to charge for that. My estimate is that the working group is looking at a variety of different models, flat fee, percentage, on the tax bill, on the water bill, all these types of things. We would be coming back to the public to first, in the fall, to say, this is a variety of models, give us your feedback on what you think is more equitable, which is more fair from your perspective. And we would be coming back to council, or Environment Committee, I should say, first, in the beginning of 2016, because this actual change will not be implemented until most likely the 2017 year, because our new billing system will only be up and running by likely late 2016, and you need your new billing system in place to change your structure.
So that's good news. We're going to take the time and make sure we get it right. So thank you very much, I appreciate your answers. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thanks councillor, good questions. Councillor Elchantiri, please.
Thank you, thank you, Your Worship, and thank you to my colleague for asking some of the question. But, Madam Treasure, we know in 2001, council adopted a new policy, amalgamated all those policy to one, which is mean some of the former townships and other, they have a different system on ours. So now we are changing, or we are looking to review that policy and make a change. Well, my question is, some of the resident who in the past has paid through their township for maintenance of their culverts in front of their property, and then in 2001, they said, well, we're removing that from the tax, in lieu, we do not maintain those culvert. So now, is that policy is going to be reviewed, all the former policy at the same time? Because I don't think, to those people who's, you know, you're on and you're off, I think we need to have a better explanation why.
Certainly, we would be taking that into consideration, but our intent is actually not to change the delivery of the service, it's just to say, how are we going to charge for the service? So a decision about whether the city would take on responsibility for maintaining culverts in front of your, of your home, I would be certainly raised, but our objective is to look at the structure. How are we charging people for the other work, other than that culvert that's actually already happening, that the city is performing? So, but we will take that into consideration.
If I may, Madam Treasure, I would like to make sure we also revisit that policy change in 2001, and so when we are looking for a new policy, we'll incorporate what's been changed and have a better explanation. Because when my colleague asked a question about the well water and, you know, people, you know, it should be, we should be ready to say right then, no, we're not taxing those people on private well and septic, not waiting, you know, or, you know, the message was, really was diluted out in the community. But I'm glad he clarified, and you clarified well enough. But when we are thinking of a new policy, I'd like to make sure we revisit the 2001 and see what's took place and why we changed it.
Certainly, we can take that direction, councillor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Elchantiri. Conseilier Blay, s'il vous plaît.
Sorry, just on a similar point, I think councillor Elchantiri said it very well. I just want to make sure that particularly when we're talking about ditches in front of people's homes, that they're currently responsible for maintaining, that that will not be factored into the stormwater charge that we may ask them to pay. So we're not going to ask them to pay a charge for a service that we're asking them to provide us, basically.
The objective is to recover the city costs, so if we're not maintaining that ditch right now, it's not in the city cost, and we would not be looking to recover it from anyone. What councillor Elchantiri is asking is can we consider whether the city would undertake that work, and we would charge back the owner?
Yeah, that's fair ball, for sure. I just want to make sure people aren't going to be charged for a service that they're actually providing us.
No, we are dealing solely with the work the city is performing at this time.
Wonderful, thank you.
Great, councillor Darousse, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam Chair, also, I, I like you also, I want to echo my colleagues, what they're saying, but one more thing is, if during that study, is, are we going to have some input on kind of services that we're going to have in our world? Like, are they going to discuss it with us and take our input? The other thing also, I would like to include in the study, the mosquito control that we've been having in the rural issue. Like, there is lots of ditches are being, breeding mosquitoes, and we need to be able, if we can control that. In old days, in a township, they used to be having programs, something like that. If we can implement this and review that in the same time, that would be great.
Certainly, we can have a discussion with the councillors about the services that are being provided now, but you have to remember, every service you add on that you want the city to do, somebody's going to have to pay for, and likely it'll be your residents. So I would just caution you to be careful about what you ask for, because you just might get it.
Anything else, councillor Darousse?
Yeah, go ahead. Thank you very much for, all what I'm, all what I'm asking, if we review it and we look into it, and all the practices how we used to do it, if we're going to go back out to the resident and ask of changing of our policy, or our tax rates, or whatever, at least if we have, when we do the study, we look at every angle, that will be great.
Certainly, councillor.
Okay, thank you, councillor Chernoshenko.
Yes, thank you very much. We did have quite a fulsome discussion at Environment Committee on this, but a couple of, I would say, messages or missed messages end up getting out there, so I think it's very important that we have clarified today, and I will do so one more time on a couple of things. First of all, nobody is going to be charged for a service that they don't get. On the other hand, people who have been getting a service and not paying for it, will likely find themselves now paying for it. That is one of the goals of this, of this review. That being said, in a sense, the, it's a, we're starting from, from scratch, in the sense of no presumed models that we will use. It's very important that we look at what is out there, what models other municipalities are using, and give our residents the opportunity to evaluate, how does that work for me, what would that end up costing me, and eventually come to a debate here around council on a choice of the best model for Ottawa. The other message that is out there, perhaps myth, is that our, all our good efforts to conserve water are backfiring on us. It might look that way, and in fact, I've asked that question a couple of times at Environment Committee and at council in the last term, when we reviewed our rates, out of the exact concern that we would end up underfunding through conservation and what steps we were taking. There's a really important message for people to remember here, which is this isn't just about the cost of the service you are getting right now. In the same way as our electricity infrastructure or our waste management infrastructure needs to expand as the population grows and demand grows, we are at a point where we could be in five or 10 years' time, through population growth, in need of new sewage treatment capacity, new water purification capacity. So everything that we can continue to do to promote conservation puts off a very expensive investment in the coming years. So conservation is as important as it always was, and anyone who has a street that is being dug up at the moment, do I say Main Street, with all of its water and sewer infrastructure being rebuilt, if we find that the capacity is no longer adequate and we have to rebuild a street prematurely, that is very expensive and very disruptive. So there are quite a number of reasons, if I haven't flogged this to death already, why we are reviewing this and why conservation still makes sense. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for that summary, councillor. So we have the recommendation from Environment Committee before us. Carried, adopté, merci. Next is Planning Committee report number seven, rapport numéro sept de comité de l'urbanisme. Councillor Fleury asked that we hold zoning bylaw 385 Sussex Drive, but before we do that, councillor Harder and Tierney have a technical amendment, so if we can ask councillor Harder. Sure, there you go.
If I could run all the way back, it wouldn't be pretty. So this is a technical amendment on the 385 Sussex Drive, and it really is a case where the incorrect legal comments were made in the document, so this is just correcting that, and therefore be it resolved that an additional document be appended to the report entitled revised legal document. In the event that the recommendation is adopted and appealed to the Ontario Municipal Board, it is expected that a two-day hearing will result. It is anticipated that the hearing can be conducted with staff, within staff resources. Should the recommendation be refused, results must be provided. In the event that such refusal is appealed to the Ontario Municipal Board, it would be necessary to retain an external planner.
Okay, so we'll deal with that afterwards, but first, questions and comments, councillor Fleury, please.
Merci, Monsieur Mayor. It's committee, unfortunately, because I was on a, I was in conference. Évidemment, c'est une situation qui est complexe.
It's a very complex situation. It's a site that's very well located, close to Sussex, right next door to the Byward Market. The parking in...
right next door to the Byward Market. The parking in this area is an essential asset for businesses and also for a church. Of course, their initial request was to keep the outdoor parking lot, to make it permanent, which is unacceptable for us. There's been an agreement in place for now 10 years, or even 20 years. So these are temporary parking lots. I would remind my colleagues that at some point, we had a submission for a temporary parking at the Riddle Centre, and I made the same kind of speech, saying that this surface parking had to be revisited, especially in the downtown area, because these public spaces must be used in a better way, and we should have underground parking. We can see that Cadillac Fairview is a nice example. They redeveloped the site. So what I would ask through the process, and it's kind of hidden in the report, I would ask staff not to wait for the temporary review of the three years, but to start the discussion with the diocese right now, so that we end up, not end up in the same position in three years. We don't want to have another surface slot that would remain there forever. Of course, there are some financial constraints, real constraints, for the parish, which requires parking spots for funerals and weddings and so on. But this could all be underground.
Mr. Mizzi, if based on this, on the staff proposal, that we, you know, I recognize and I see that staff rightly so are saying, wait a minute, we don't want to make this permanent. So they came back with another temporary exemption. They've had it for quite some time now. I ask that we don't wait for them to resubmit in three years, and that we initiate right away on discussions on what can happen on that site. They unfortunately don't seem as creative as our committee would like. Parking spots are important, and they're valuable, but that space is prime for redevelopment. And in the agreement, they had committed to coming back with a significant proposal. 10 years later, we're now 20 years later. So I hope that you can take that as direction to reach out to them proactively ahead of the completion of this temporary exemption.
Mr. Mayor, yes, we are actually having those discussions already with this applicant that has occurred. So we'll take your message back.
Perfect. Thank you.
And I think it's appropriate, because Counselor Harder also has undertaken to work on this file, and she's next on the speakers list.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I just want to reiterate what Mr. Mizzi was saying. In fact, we've had a discussion in the last week about this very file, and about the appropriateness of continuously having an application come forward to extend parking opportunities for one owner, if you will. And then considering the greater work that we're doing on the Byward Market area, and how we work with what we know is happening there, and hopefully benefit the church as well, so that we can come up with something that, in this timeframe, will be a game changer. So we're on it, so to speak. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else on this item on 385 Sussex? So we have an amendment by Counselor Harder, seconded by the Vice Chair Counselor Tierney. On the amendment, carried, it's technical in nature. On the motion as amended, carried, dissent by Counselor Leeper. All right. So next item is over to Counselor Tierney. Motion to adopt reports, please.
Motion pour adopt sans de rapport. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That the Committee on Protective Services Committee Report Four, Environment Committee Report Three, Planning Committee Report Seven, and Transit Commission Report Three be received and adopted as amended.
On the motion, carried, adopté. Motions of which notice have been previously given, motions dont avis a été donnée entièrement. Counselor Neusebaum, seconded by Counselor McKenney. And we have a replacement motion that Counselor Neusebaum will explain to us. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In 2006, the Government of Canada updated its long-term vision and plan for the Parliamentary and Judicial Precinct area. It was the most recent iteration in a proud history of planning in our nation's capital, dating back to the 1938 Gilebe Plan. The 2006 update confirmed that the completion of the judicial triad would be achieved through the construction of a new federal court building. Just as the parliamentary branch of government is celebrated with center, east, and west blocks, so too the plan outlined should the judicial branch of government be celebrated. Together, these two triads would serve as a thoughtful and considered representation of our democratic institutions at the focal point of the nation's capital and our city, and of Confederation Boulevard. Of note, the 2006 update was a widely consulted document. Various Government of Canada departments, the NCC, officials from the House of Commons, and the Senate, to be sure, but also others, such as the City of Ottawa, who sat on the core group of the project team, supported by an advisory team of the country's top architects and planners. The long-term vision and plan is guided by the idea that the quote "landscape" and architectural style of the precinct are enduring visual symbols of our country, and that the precinct continue to be the physical expression of our commitment to democracy and freedom. And the eight listed values include heritage, defined as, quote, "respect for the role and heritage value of the buildings, the landscape and the settings as a symbol of Canadian democracy," and that the development should protect and enhance the architectural and heritage integrity of the buildings, the landscape and their setting, including their relation to the city, to recognize the symbolic importance of this site. This motion, therefore, has a simple objective, to request that the Government of Canada relocate the memorial to the victims of communism, to a site that does not violate the vision and values of this special place in the nation's capital. The motion very carefully focuses on the proposed site of the memorial, not the idea of the memorial itself. I don't believe it's our role to engage or comment on what events the Government of Canada chooses to memorialize. I do, however, think it's our role to stand up for the widely consulted and considered vision for the parliamentary and judicial triads. The process of deciding their future, and any changes thereto, must befit their status as revered ground for our country and also for our city. The motion before council today has one additional clause from the version Counselor McKenney and I tabled at our last meeting. And I'd like to acknowledge the contribution of Counselor Egli, who helped craft a sentence in the motion that makes clear that the city would be willing to help identify a suitable site that does not impede the achievement of the long-term vision and plan. The sentence makes clear that the city would be prepared to play a constructive role in solving the problem of the proposed site. I'd like to thank the many residents who have contacted my office to express their support for the motion, as well as the few who have expressed questions. In each case, I have stressed that this motion is not about the merits of the memorial in question, but it really is about the proposed location. I'd also like to thank Mayor Watson, who has shown important leadership on this file. As Chair of the city's Built Heritage Subcommittee, as an elected representative, and as a resident believing this issue to be critical for our city as well as our country, I would ask colleagues for your support on this motion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very, thank you very much, Counselor. Counselor McKenney, the seconder of the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I just wanted to take the opportunity, because, you know, this is, this monument is proposed to go up in my ward. And often, we're, you know, it's suggested to us that this is a federal issue, it's not a local issue. And I disagree with that. This is a local land use issue. It is an example of another level of government directing land use, not, in fact, not even respecting their own long-term plans in our downtown. Even the NCC, you know, has expressed issues about the location. So this is not about going up against another level of government for the sake of argument. But, you know, at the same time, you know, as a city, we're investing, you know, $2.1 billion in a new LRT system, you know, biggest investment that we've made in our city. And there's no more important time for us to get how we plan our downtown and our whole city right. You know, when we build the downtown, it is for all residents. It's key to building healthy and vibrant neighborhoods. And actually, we could say that about any part of our city. So it's, this is about respecting the land use for this part of our city at this time. There was no consultation. As a city, we have committed to an enhanced public engagement strategy. Our new Chair of our Planning Committee, you know, has, was very clear and has been a very strong supporter of, you know, enhanced consultation. And that didn't happen here, especially when it comes to land use and planning our cities, so that we have the certainty in how we build our neighborhoods. It's the number one thing that people will tell you when you talk to them, what they care about in terms of planning, and it is predictability and certainty. And so it's for these reasons that I've seconded the motion, and that I would encourage my colleagues to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Conseilleur Plutier, s'il vous plaît.
Merci, Monsieur Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
To sway my colleagues, we've received many emails, some of them suggesting that this council should not be involved in this decision, in commenting on this decision, that the motion is frivolous and appropriate, and reminding us that we have no effect on the outcome of the decision. In fact, it is our right and our responsibility as a City of Ottawa Council to comment on this. Ottawaans, through its mayor, through its committees, through this council, want us to comment on what goes on within the urban boundary. And even the NCC acknowledges in its report, it refers to its partnership with stakeholders, such as the City of Ottawa, that's not verbatim in there, with stakeholders in establishing a common vision for a signature capital. And this is an important issue to that effect. So I, while not wanting to sway my colleagues one way or another, as was said by my colleagues, Counselor Neusebaum and McKenney, some may or may not support the idea of this memorial to victims. But I certainly support the fact that it was brought forth for discussion today. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Merci, Conseilleur Plutier. Counselor Egli, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And first off, I want to thank Counselor Neusebaum for listening to the concerns raised by a number of my residents, who felt that the tenor of the motion was such that council was possibly saying no to the monument or the memorial. And clearly, that's not what we're doing here today. They wanted to see something that was a bit more constructive, a bit more positive in terms of how we go forward on this particularly difficult issue. And I think that the amended wording captures that idea and the spirit that this is going to go in our city. It's not something that we're against going in the city, it's a question of where it's going to go. And the other piece of the amended motion that really resonates with me, having recently participated in the 100-day negotiation with our federal partners, is the benefit that we got out of that process, in terms of everybody sitting down, having discussion, having dialogue about a difficult issue impacting on the city, but with, obviously, with federal issues attached to it. And more importantly, the positive public response to that process, how pleased people were in the various communities and the media that the city and our federal partners were sitting down and discussing, instead of being in separate corners on a project, but meeting in the middle and working out a collaborative resolution. So it's my hope, through this motion, we've opened the door for our federal partners to have a discussion with the city on an issue that impacts both federally, but also very much on the residents of our city. The door is open. I'm hoping they take the opportunity to walk through that door and engage in discussions with the mayor, or whoever he may appoint, to deal with this issue. So I will absolutely be supporting this, supporting this motion. And again, thank you, Counselor Neusebaum.
Great, thank you. I think that was a good comparison, the challenge we had with the LRT, and how we were able to work out a cooperative and respectful solution. Counselor Taylor, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And I won't, I won't repeat a lot of what my colleague, Counselor Egli, has said. But suffice it to say that I was certainly torn in considering this, and I'm happy to see the replacement motion today by Counselor Neusebaum. I think, to Counselor Egli's point, it strikes a much more conciliatory tone, and I hope it's received, if passed, by our federal partners as being an invitation to work together with them, as we have successfully recently in the past, and hope to continue to do so, to build a world-class and renew a world-class capital city. I'm always loath, and I know how many of us around this table feel, when we receive an edict from another level of government explaining how we should spend our taxpayers' money and make a decision one way or another, that has, you know, little to no, with little to no input from another level of government. But in this specific instance, I've heard from my residents who are supportive of the motion, but like many of Counselor Egli's, they had an issue with the tone in which it was phrased, that they wanted to see a much more collaborative approach, rather than what they perceived as being a combative one. So I thank Counselor Neusebaum for the replacement motion, and I'll be voting in favor today.
Thank you. Counselor Hubley, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. This motion deals with a federal long-term plan for federal lands and for a federal building on those lands or a monument. I believe as Canadians, we are all blessed to be able to comment on all business of government from different levels. But this monument is, and also this monument is part of celebrating that we have that right. What I find very troubling with this motion is that it suggests, without any public consultation on our part, we want, as a municipal council, to start voting on the business of other levels of government. This is not our sandbox. We have the responsibility to taxpayers to focus on municipal business. And this has nothing, like, one of my colleagues suggests that this is part of the planning process, that the feds should be bringing applications to planning committees, so we can run the public consultation on where the buildings are going to go, or that this letter should be sent to the feds to say that we will help them figure out where the monument should go. It's, in my view, it's not our business. We need to focus on our business. With respect to the comparison to LRT, it's very different. The discussion around LRT was putting municipal infrastructure on federal lands. And to credit to the mayor, he was, you were able to work a solution to what was a very troubling impasse that we were at with our federal partners. Motions like this, I believe, don't help that relationship, and therefore I'll be voting against it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Hubley. Counselor Shirelli, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. I agree with Counselor Hubley. This project is dramatically different from the LRT project, because the LRT project was our attempt to put our project on federal government land under federal jurisdiction. The project in front of us here is a federal project on federal land, completely within federal jurisdiction. If our residents have problem with the location or the way that is designed, they should go to their MP. That's what you elect your MP for, is to deal with issues in the federal jurisdiction. I think, with the exception of areas where another government's changes or legislation are going to adversely affect direct service to our residents, or where their changes or legislation is going to actually cost us more money. When neither of those two things are at play, I think it's our responsibility to let the federal government legislate within the federal sphere, just as I think it's their responsibility to let us legislate within our sphere. I wouldn't want them coming in and commenting on any of the infrastructure projects that we do, that we wholly fund ourselves on our own property. Secondly, on a personal note, my wife and her family were escapees from a communist country. And I have heard over the last decades, many, many stories of the abuse, mistreatment, and victimization that was brought to bear on people who were occupied by communist dictatorship. And here we have a government that is about to And here we have a government that is about to show some honor and recognition to those people. And, you know, I might have felt a bit differently if first there was a motion congratulating them on doing some sort of monument, and then maybe at a later date, asking if we could talk about the location. But that's not what's happened here. I think we, we're sending a message that A, we're going to intervene or try to intervene into federal government jurisdiction, and B, we're not sending a message that we support the monument in question. So I will not be supporting this motion.
Thank you. Counselor Kakish, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and I agree with a lot of the points that have been set around the table here today. This is not a issue where we can have any impact on the sale. We can express our voice, and, and that's fine to do that. And in terms of the content of the motion, I, I do agree with the content. I don't agree with the process of how we're doing it, and particularly at a time when we have a new federal partner at the table who's shown well to collaborate with us, particularly after the Western LRT, as some of my colleagues have pointed out. So this is not the time to poke the bear, in my opinion. I think we're on a good collaborative relationship, and especially at a time where we're looking to collaborate with the province and the feds on the biggest project in the city's history. These discussions can happen offline, and, Mr. Mayor, you've indicated and expressed your views on this weeks ago. So the position of the city, I think, is clear, and I don't see any good coming out of this motion. That's why I'll be voting against it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Brockington, please.
Thank you, your worship. One, one question that I have, and it's not to be addressed by anyone, but just for council to, to consider is when, when does a municipality have an obligation to comment or advocate on behalf of their citizens with respect to other levels of government? We all deal with various issues, not just related to city business. Canada Post community mailboxes, I've got VRL issues in River Ward, Civic Hospital potentially moving from Kitchicipi to River Ward. These aren't directly all related to municipal business, but certainly in River Ward, my citizens expect me to get involved as best I can to assist them, because the ongoing goal is to liaise with other elected members of the same constituency and work together on behalf of those citizens. The ultimate goal is to work on behalf of the citizens, to make the community and the city better. And so within our city, we have a proposal here that many local, national, and even international organizations say is not the best location. I have not seen any type of reaction to whether or not the memorial is appropriate, rather the location. So I, I do believe the motion before us is appropriate, because we are acting on behalf of the citizens who have left us to speak on their behalf. And basically, we're saying, federal government, we believe the location should be changed, and we want to work with you on helping you on other sites that you may be considering. So I think the motion before us is appropriate, and I'll be voting in favor.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Midic, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Although I support the spirit 100%, and I think it is, it's sad to see 105-year-old plan be changed, they all, the federal government is the property owner. And I support the monument 100%. My grandfather passed away, having never been able to set foot back in his home country of Serbia, because of the communist dictator would have thrown him in jail for being loyal to the, to the previous government before World War II. But we have ways of commenting on this. We have Twitter, we have letters to the editor, we have our constituents. I, I know I sent an email to my MP, but I'm, I'm very wary of using a motion at council to try and criticize a decision made by the federal government. So I won't be supporting the motion today.
Thank you, Counselor. Are there other comments? No. I'd like to offer a couple of comments on, on the motion. J'aimerais faire quelques commentaires au sujet de cette motion. First, as, as you know, I've spoken out on this issue before, and I'll be supporting Counselor Newsbaum's motion. I want to thank he and Counselor McKenney for bringing this forward, and all members of council, regardless of your point of view. I think it's been a, a very thoughtful discussion on an issue that obviously has generated a fair amount of passion on both sides of the issue. I also want to thank Councillors Harder and Egli, as Counselor Newsbaum pointed out. They brought forward some language, I think, that is very respectful of the fact that we want, we bring this forward in a spirit of cooperation. I think good friends can have arguments, and we can still be respectful of each other's point of view. But as Counselor Newsbaum's motion clearly states our concern here is about the location of the proposed memorial and not the merits of the memorial or its design. Those latter discussions are not for us as elected city officials to undertake. However, as a resident of Ottawa and as a federal taxpayer, I'm bothered by the lack of consultation on this project and on the proposed changes to the federal plan for the judicial precinct that was part of a 2006 study where there was great input from the city, citizens and other government agencies. It's well documented at this point that there is significant opposition to the memorial's location. The architecture community, both locally, provincially and nationally, opposes the location as its bleak nature runs counter to the principle of good urban design. The legal community rightfully opposes this being used as a political statement to erase long-established plans for the Supreme Court of Canada Federal Court precinct. The taxpayers rightfully oppose the financial arrangements and decision-making, which have been void of fairness and transparency. And many, many residents of the City of Ottawa have also spoken out on this project. Plusieurs résidents d'At Ottawa se posent à ce projet.
Many residents are opposed to this project.
In favor of it. Others are against it. Katerina Cesarny, a victim of communism herself in Czechoslovakia before coming to Ottawa, wrote in a letter to the Globe and Mail that she is, quote, "vehemently opposed to the placement of the proposed monument in front of the Supreme Court." Davia Stasulius of Ottawa, the daughter of parents displaced from communist countries, wrote to the Ottawa citizen that the proposal, quote, "mocks the judicial wing of our government by usurping the land that was long planned to complete a judicial triad of buildings." As elected officials at the City of Ottawa, we have a duty to listen to our residents and to act on their behalf. And it's clear to me that a majority of residents engaged on this project are in fact against it.
Il est clair pour moi personnellement. It's obvious for me that the majority of residents engaged in this process are not in favor of this project.
Reiterate, the parallel discussion on the merits and design of the monument is neither one that is before us today, nor one that I believe we should be undertaking. But the location of the monument of this size and prominence will have significant effect on our city going forward, and I believe that it is best suited in its original location, which was agreed to back many years ago, the Garden of the Provinces. I recognize that this is ultimately not the city's decision to take, but I do think it's important that we pass this motion to give voice to our constituents, who have spoken out in very large numbers against a monument whose location is better suited elsewhere. For those who say that this is not a city issue, I say it definitely is a city issue. It's about proper planning procedures, it's about respecting plans and designs that have been agreed to under federal planning rules, it's about the most prominent street in our city for visitors and residents, and it's about ensuring that major decisions like this have a proper, proper public and civic consultation built in, so taxpayers can at least have a say in how their city will grow over the next decade. Why does the government feel it necessary to consult the public on the redevelopment of Tunny's pasture, but then not the judicial precinct? Why has there been extensive public consultation on the Rockcliff Air Base lands, but absolutely no input allowed on this project? Why is this prime piece of real estate valued at millions of dollars being given away to a private interest when we at the city are required to pay tens of millions of dollars, the federal government, for subterranean land rights for a public transit system? This is not some partisan attack on the federal government. This is really about fairness and respect, and asking the federal government to ensure we have the right to have a say in the way our city grows and develops. And for that reason, I'll be voting for the motion. Yays and nays on Counselor Newsbaum's motion, please.
Counselor Moffett? Counselor Deans?
Yes.
Counselor Harder?
Yes.
Conseil Fleury?
Oui.
Counselor Kakish?
Non.
Conseil Minette?
Oui.
Counselor Brockington?
Yes.
Counselor Shirelli?
No.
Counselor Egli?
Yes.
Conseil Cloutier?
Oui.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Newsbaum?
Yes.
Counselor Alshantiiri?
Yes.
Counselor Hubley?
No.
Counselor Midic?
Ah, non.
Conseil Blay?
Yes.
Counselor McKenney?
Yes.
Counselor Leeper?
Yes.
Counselor Chenushenko?
Yes.
Counselor Cadri?
Yes.
Counselor Wilkinson?
Yes.
Counselor Giroux?
Non.
Counselor Tierney?
Yes.
Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Eighteen yays, six nays.
Okay, the motion carries. A motion requiring suspension of the rules of procedure, motion exigeant la suspension des règles de procédure. Counselor Harder and Counselor Tierney have a motion with respect to Canada 150 funding. Counselor Harder, if you'd like to introduce your motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I want to thank the federal government for this opportunity to, to participate in the Canada 150 Community Infrastructure Program. And I also want to thank the, the team at the city here, who did an amazing job to come up with a very balanced list under very, very tight timelines.
Sorry, Counselor, I apologize. Counselor Deans was quite correct. We need suspension of the rules first.
Okay.
So on suspension?
Carry.
Carry. Apologies. I thought you'd say yes to that. Counselor Harder, the floor is yours.
Okay, thanks. So again, I wanted to thank the federal government for the opportunity to participate in the Canada 150 Community Infrastructure Program. And I wanted to thank staff who've done an amazing job over the weekend and yesterday in coming up with, I think, a very balanced list under very tight timelines. And I also want to thank those councillors on behalf of the mayor, who participated by submitting projects that fit the criteria in their own parts of Ottawa. So the motion that is moved by myself and, and seconded by Counselor Tierney, that the rules of procedure be waived to consider the following motion. Due to timelines, as the Canada 150 Community Infrastructure Program funding was announced on Friday, May 15, 2015, with an application deadline of June 9, 2015, and council is not scheduled to meet again until June 10, 2015. Whereas the Government of Canada announced Canada 150 Community Infrastructure Program funding on Friday, May 15, 2015, that supports rehabilitation, renewal and limited expansion of existing public infrastructure assets. And whereas the Federal Economic Development Agency for Southern Ontario, Fed Dev Ontario, is delivering the program in Southern Ontario with an allocation of 44.4 million over two years, and applications with supporting documentation for Canada 150 Community Infrastructure Program funding must be submitted to Fed Dev Ontario no later than 5 o'clock on June 9, 2015. And whereas funding can only be used toward costs incurred between April 1, 2016 and March 31, 2018, and whereas the Government of Canada is requiring that proposed projects must be duly authorized or endorsed by a resolution of council. Whereas the Government of Canada is requiring that proposed projects duly authorized or endorsed by council must be ranked in order of priority. And whereas one or more projects may be constructed and operated in the City of Ottawa, but these must be substantially completed by March 2018 to meet the program criteria outlined above. And whereas the following projects qualify for Canada 150 funding, community centers, which include Royal Canadian Legions, cultural centers and museums, parks, recreational trails, libraries, recreational facilities, tourism facilities, docks, cenotaphs and other existing community infrastructure. Therefore be it resolved that council approve the City of Ottawa list of projects attached as Document 1 for submission to the Canada 150 Community Infrastructure Program, with parks and recreation facilities, projects being the City of Ottawa's first priority, and cultural and heritage projects being the City of Ottawa's second priority. And be it further resolved that council delegates the authority to the City Treasurer to identify funding sources for projects approved for funding by the Government of Canada and direct staff to proceed with official funding requests for the projects identified on the City of Ottawa list of projects. And be it further resolved that council delegate the authority to the City Treasurer and the City Manager to rank the projects on a list of projects should additional information regarding eligibility criteria become available before the application deadline. And, Mr. Mayor, we have Document 1 that goes with that, with the projects that staff have pulled together. And I'd just like to make one suggestion, one recommendation, before we vote on this, that the Minto Recreation Complex facility upgrades with a value of 600,000, that Ward 21, which is Counselor Moffett's, Rita Gulburn Ward, which is right up against that area and certainly benefits from that kind of, an investment, be added to that Minto Recreation Complex. Thank you.
So just for the benefit of those
21.
at home, it's on Priority A list that we add 21 to the Minto Recreation Upgrade to accompany wards 3 and 22. Okay. So that, since that's your motion, that's, we don't require a concurrence. So questions and comments? Counselor Brockington?
Thank you, your worship. Just one quick question, but first, thank you to staff for putting the list together so quick. I know we're under very tight timelines, and it's important to get Ottawa's needs in. Just a question through you, are these definite projects that are going forward, or does the federal government have their own review and approval process, and then we'll hear back that, yes, you've submitted 25 items, but we've approved less than 25? What's the process after we submit our list?
Mr. Mayor, I'll take that question. I believe, learning from past experience with the federal government with these kinds of application processes, we will hear back. Staff estimate that if it was done on a population basis, we might be eligible for four of that 150 million dollars of funding, which would translate to about 8 million dollars worth of project spending. But it's important to note that other community organizations are also eligible to apply to this, and that may reduce whatever might be allocated to the City of Ottawa. So we will hear back. It's our intention to apply for, and this is why this lists significantly more than what we might think might come our way from, on that basis. And the motion says that should more information about eligibility become available. It's fact, in fact, staff's intent to try to get more information from the federal government between now and when we make the application, so that we can submit, you know, a prioritized ranking of these projects that has the best chance of securing the maximum funding from the federal government.
And I'll assume, once our official list has been submitted, we'll get a copy so we can communicate that. But just to take note that when we are communicating with our constituents, this is our, this is our list, but it's not necessarily all going to be approved. So thanks for that clarification.
Yeah, I think, just really to put this in perspective and context, our staff have estimated that if it's based roughly on a per capita basis, Ottawa, the city, would be eligible for a maximum of about 4 million dollars. So we have obviously a list that far exceeds that in terms of matching. We don't know if the province will be involved at all. So I think we have to manage expectations, because there are a lot of great projects here, but these are the ones that our staff have put together based on the criteria of the document we received not too long ago from the federal government with respect to, you know, what their rules are. Ultimately, it'll be the federal government's decision. And I should also remind members, there are a number of other community groups that can rightfully apply as well. I mentioned, you know, communities that may have a cenotaph or a legion expansion. Those are mentioned specifically in the criteria of the, of the report that we, we received online. And a group like, I know in Counselor Leeper's ward, I ran into folks from the Dover Court community, they're going to be applying separately from our list, because they have a different arrangement than, than a regular community center. So I think we have to keep in mind that our list is very extensive, and I think staff, as Counselor Brockington pointed out, and Counselor Harder, they've done a very good job pulling these together, but we, we do not have the benefit of having a bottomless pit of money. There's basically, if we go through the per capita rationale, about 4 million dollars. So Counselor Wilkinson, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The question I had about the Priority A and B, and the way the motion was written was that the A was our first choices and the B were second choices, but they are actually different types of things. One is on One is on recreational things, the other is on culture. And I would like to have us go forward if these are just other projects and not necessarily only to be considered after you go all the others. Because what will end up happening, of course, we'll get nothing in culture if that is followed by the federal government. And I'm quite aware of the fact that the local MPs and all the rest have a big say in these, as they did before on infrastructure projects. But they did choose ones that we had put forward, and to some extent, it followed the priorities. And I would like to see that the priorities were not A and B, but in fact, one list of priorities that includes both of these types of uses. And could that be done when it's put forward?
I don't know, Mr. Kirkpatrick. I think there was some rationale for doing the A and the B list, but my advice, and I think as Councillor Wilkinson pointed out, the members of parliament obviously are going to be a good resource for us to seek their concurrence on some of these projects. So I think, you know, all of you have contact on a fairly regular basis with your members of parliament, and it may be wise for you and community groups that want to promote a particular project to go and visit those MPs. But, City Manager, was there some rationale why Priority A and B? Does it mean that B takes a secondary priority, or is it just categorizing those that are sports versus arts?
In the motion, Mr. Mayor said it was secondary. That's the concern I have.
Yeah, that's why I wanted to know whether there was a reason for that.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, as the motion indicates, and as I was saying in response to Councillor Brockington's question, we believe that there will be, it'll be important to put some prioritization on these projects when we submit the application. We're going to look for more context from the federal government to do that. This was staff's recommendation based on what we know to date in terms of what we think, there was a lot of criteria in the federal government's announcement focused on community-based, community center types of projects. These are ones that are high priority in some of our asset management lifecycle programs as well. So the categorization between A and B was staff's recommendation to council. But we could do away with that, and we could respond in the listing of the priority based on the information that we get from the federal government should we get more between now and the application date.
I understand that, but I think that it sends the wrong message if you say, these are our A and these are our, after you look at those, you can look at these. So it really puts them in a secondary role. And where it's interesting, one are the city ones that are going to help us on our city part of the budget. The other ones, though, are things that are budgeted through the city, like the library board, which really is a city operation, and the museums, it's a city museum, et cetera. But they're run by separate boards and various things. And it's almost looking like anybody that is part of the city but not a direct city department is put second rate. And I would think they should all be at, two different groups of them. One is city recreation facilities, the other one is culture facilities, but they should all just be on the same level. And then the decision committee made by the federal government, we know they do that. They look at that, they look at the details we put in and say, these ones met our criteria more than others, and we expect that to happen. But I don't want them to discard these simply because they say they're second rate. And that's what they're doing in the motion, Mr. Mayor.
So maybe the suggestion I could offer is that we simply remove the words Priority A and Priority B and just categorize them as parks and recreation facilities.
That would be much better to do and
Does the move of the motion concur with that, Councillor? It doesn't put the arts and cultural and heritage facilities as a secondary.
If that, would it just be a friendly admission? Yeah.
That's fine.
That's fine, okay. So we'll just remove the word Priority A and Priority B and just
Thank you.
it'll be two categories, okay? Thank you very much. Councillor Kakish, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just had a quick question for staff. I see that, and I appreciate we've had a little bit of time to put this list together. And, Mr. Kirkpatrick, you just mentioned that most of these, this list is based on the lifecycle renewal priorities from staff, yet I see some newer buildings here. And just curious how, why are those newer buildings there when we have community centers that are in much more dire circumstances that could use this funding as opposed to something that was built in the last year or two?
Mr. Mayor, maybe that, and I don't have the projects that you're focused on, but it may be that those were projects that were, as the mayor indicated, council was requested to identify projects that they'd like to see considered on the list. They may have come that way. Staff took a look at all of the eligibility criteria that the federal government had provided, and then looked at what do we have that is actually constructible in that timeline in terms of plans in place, designs in place, that kind of thing. So that's why you're seeing a mix of lifecycle and, in some cases, more renovation or expansion projects on the list.
Okay. And I guess to Mr. Chenier, something like Fred Barrett, why can we add that to the list here, or much more dire circumstances than some of the other facilities on here?
Fred Barrett Arena did not have a specific lifecycle that would, that we thought in our assessment would have a, an expanded or improved community use project assigned to it. We focused on projects that we had been made aware of in recent times where there was a real community identified deficiency or opportunity for expanded use that could be put in place. And unfortunately, in the case of many facilities, those were not evident.
Thank you, Mr. Chenier. I'm just thinking of, you know, the Fred Barrett Arena in crumbling circumstances and in urgent need of repairs and renovations, and I don't see it on this list. So if there's something we can do to bring a motion forward to add it there and explore that further, I'd ask for assistance from the clerk's office to do that. Thank you.
Okay, that's it, Councillor? Anything else? Okay, thank you. Councillor Shirelli, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. I just caution everyone not to get too deep in the weeds on this stage of things, because as most of you remember, for the last at least three or four times, we faced this kind of request. We're asked to rank things, we rank them, but then usually, the government then establishes separate categories that they decide to judge things under, and then that affects how they receive the rankings. And they don't actually hold themselves to the ranking that we give them anyway. So it's probably not worth, as it wasn't the last few times we've done this, it's probably not worth a lot of worry about where they're sitting on the priority list. As long as they're legitimate projects that have a real need, I think they're going to get their day in court.
Thank you, Councillor. Councillor Deans, please.
Thank you. And, Mr. Mayor, just a couple of questions. One, the motion does indicate that the federal government has told us that we must rank in order of priority these projects. So obviously, we haven't done that. There was some attempt to rank in buckets, but we've just taken the buckets out. So effectively, this motion no longer has a ranking of priorities. And I'm just wondering, what will happen if they reject the list because it hasn't been ranked? Do we need to give you delegated authority to rank that list, or how will you approach that? Does it?
Mr. Mayor, the last clause of the motion does
Does give staff that authority, Councillor, on
And then the second question is, in terms of the matching funding, these are $0.50. So in terms of the matching funding, how will we address the matching dollars?
Right now, Councillor, what we're looking for is actually just a short-term source of funding for it. What we have in the strategic initiative list that you would have went live yesterday is actual, an increased contribution to capital in 2017, which we would direct to this, but we would cover it in the short term from another source and then repay it with that money in 2017, or '18 even. There's some money there in case it came in, you know, wishful thinking that it comes in really big.
Thank you.
That's a good point. Councillor Deans, thank you. Councillor McKenney, please.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one quick question then, just for clarification. The budget for each of these is not our ask. It's the total amount, and we're asking for 50% of this?
Each of these is an individual application. You're not putting this in total. So each one of these you're asking for on its own at 50%.
Okay, that clarifies. Thank you.
Okay, so, Councillor Harder, you were just going to amend the wording to reflect the removal of A and B.
That's correct, Mr. Mayor. So if you look at the motion above the two, be it further resolved, and therefore be it resolved, that will now be that council approve the City of Ottawa list of projects attached as Document One as amended for admission to the Canada 150 Community Infrastructure Program with parks and recreation facility projects and cultural and heritage projects being the city of Ottawa's priorities. So no identification of which was ahead of the other?
Okay, so that's your motion, so
That's right.
we'll accept that as friendly. Okay, anyone else on this item? Carried? Sorry, does Councillor Kakish have a motion?
Mayor, I just want to add Fred Barrett Arena for $1 million renovation is exploring that avenue as well and seconded by Councillor Hubley.
So to Dan Chenier, who is where? Does this, does the Fred Barrett Arena meet the criteria of this program based on the federal rules?
We understand the criteria now. Renovations and minor expansions do qualify. Fred Barrett Arena being an older arena now, no doubt, we could come up with some improvements to both the arenas and the hall. We don't specifically have a project costed out at this point or a scope of work, but if directed by council, we would of course go away and look at what work needs to be done and price it out accordingly.
So where did the million-dollar figure come from, Councillor?
I was told we need a dollar figure for the motion, so that was something we came up with for a start, but the explorer, I'd like
Sorry, Councillor
Mr. Chenier to explore that.
Councillor Harder?
I think that's not the way this works, because I think that probably, if I look around the table, other people have submitted other projects, in fact, we've heard that, that didn't make the list at all. And they may or may not be projects that are already on a priority list somewhere. So my question to Mr. Chenier is, did you, as part of the team, have to make decisions on some of the wishes that may already be existing projects?
Yes, we obviously received more ideas than appear on the list. And there are, of course, a lengthy list of facility deficiencies in Mr. Newell's lifecycle program that could all have been included. But as I mentioned earlier, we tried to focus on projects that had an appeal to the funder as a Canada 150 project that would develop something that addressed a particular community need. And so that's what we distilled this list down to.
I think that it's important that, as Councillor Kakish was reading that, and with all due respect, I can understand why you're saying that. I've been to Fred Barrett Arena. But I'm looking around at the other faces here, and they're going, no, because they've already submitted projects as well. So there's nothing to stop any of the councillors from lobbying their federal representatives to see if they can change their mind. But this is not a project. The Fred Barrett Arena is not currently one of our projects. It hasn't been assessed as far as financing, and it isn't on a priority list, so it would be somewhat of queue jumping, for sure, which this council has never supported. Or rarely supported. I will change that to that.
All right, so, Councillor Kakish, do you want to introduce your motion?
Whereas the federal government announced Canada 150 Community Infrastructure funding on Friday, May 15, that supports rehab renewal and limited expansion of existing public infrastructure assets, whereas the Federal Economic Development Agency for Southern Ontario is delivering the program in Southern Ontario and applications with supporting documentation for 150 Community Infrastructure Program funding must be submitted to Fed Dev Ontario no later than 5:00 p.m. on June 15. Whereas city staff have submitted a prioritized list of projects City Council on May 27 for consideration and endorsement, therefore it be resolved that council approve Fred Barrett Arena renovation with a dollar amount to be determined to the prioritized City of Ottawa list of projects for submission to the Canada 150 Infrastructure Program. Mr. Mayor, I'll just add one single point, that this is a wish list, and we are not going to get funding for all these projects, so I don't see any downside to adding one more infrastructure project for a community center that is in dire need of repairs. Thank you.
Okay, Councillor Deans?
Mr. Mayor, just a question for Mr. Chenier on the Fred Barrett Arena, because I do remember, I mean, the problem with doing any of this on the fly is that we haven't had the real opportunity to weigh the priorities. And of course, we could all use more money for all of our facilities and our ward. But I do recall that Fred Barrett Arena went through a rather substantial renovation just a few years ago with the upstairs and the new kitchen and everything. So I just wonder what we're talking about in terms of this renovation.
Mr. Mayor, the councillor is right that the arena was twinned and renovated a few years ago. We don't currently have a project for an extensive renovation or a particular community request for any aspects, unlike some of the other arenas that are on this list where we've had specific change room issues, which tend to be the common issue with arenas of alternate gender and those type of change room issues. With Fred Barrett, there is no current issue on our radar, and so we would really have to go and look at some of the basic lifecycle issues that might exist there, or look at a more general renovation cleanup of the facility as opposed to a very specific project that would be on the books.
Okay, so we have a motion, yays and nays, on Councillor Kakish's motion.
Councillor Moffat?
No.
Councillor Deans?
No.
Councillor Harder?
No.
Conseilier Fleury? Councillor Kakish?
Yes.
Conseilier Manette?
Yes.
Councillor Brockington?
No.
Councillor Shirelli?
No.
Councillor Egley?
No.
Conseilier Cloutier?
No.
Councillor Taylor?
No.
Councillor Newsbaum?
No.
Councillor Alshantiri? Councillor Hubley?
Yes.
Councillor Midic?
Yes.
Conseilier Blay?
No.
Councillor McKenney?
No.
Councillor Leaper? Councillor Chenchenko? Councillor Cadri?
Yes.
Councillor Wilkinson?
No.
Councillor DeRouze?
Yes.
Councillor Tierney?
No.
Mayor Watson?
No.
Six yays, seventeen nays.
Okay, so on the main motion, as presented by Councillor Harder and seconded by Councillor Tierney, carried? Adopté, merci. The next motion requiring suspension of the rules of procedure is by Councillor Deans for Seniors Month on waiving suspension of the rules. Carried?
Carried.
Councillor Deans, please. Seconded by Councillor Wilkinson.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Just quickly read the motion. Whereas Canadian demographics indicate that seniors are one of the fastest-growing population groups in our communities with nationwide projections that by 2036, their numbers will represent 24.5% or 9.8 million citizens. And whereas, according to the 2011 census from Stats Canada, 116,590 seniors aged 65 and over reside in the city of Ottawa, making up 13.2% of the total Ottawa population. And it is expected that by the year 2031, the number will go to approximately 250,000 seniors, making up 22% of the total Ottawa population. And whereas the city of Ottawa has benefited from the many tireless hours of volunteer work and leadership generously donated by local senior citizens, and whereas senior citizens have helped to build our communities through active living, shared knowledge, and a diversity of experiences. And whereas the month of June is recognized by the Province of Ontario as Seniors Month, therefore be it resolved that Ottawa City Council declare June 2015 to be Seniors Month in the city of Ottawa.
Great. Does anyone else wish to speak? Just a reminder to residents who are watching, we're bringing back the annual Canada Day Breakfast at the Aberdeen Pavilion, and I know members of council have been sent tickets, and there's tickets distributed through the library system. We thank Councillor Tierney for that. library system. We thank councillor Tierney for that. And I know that three branches have already given away all their allotments. So those who wish to come to the Canada Day breakfast, obviously on July 1st at the Aberdeen Pavilion, please go to your local branch of the Ottawa Public Library. So on the motion, carried, adopté, merci. There we go, and that's our honorary senior citizen, Clarence Dungy. And the older guy next to him, Pierre Pagey. Next is a motion by councillor Moffat, seconded by councillor Darousse, suspension of the rules because of a timing issue on sidewalk versus, I guess it's a paved shoulder on suspension. Carried. Councillor Moffat, please.
Thank you. I won't spend too much time on it. I just wanted to, we were doing, Rita Valley Drive South, sewer, stormwater sidewalk and road renewal this summer. Through consultation, obviously, city policies to put sidewalks on both sides of the road. Through consultation, it was determined that the community would be much happier with the existing one-side sidewalk that they have, and then with a combination of parking bays and paved shoulders on the other side, which 95% of the time would act as a sidewalk and a cycling facility. But then during the times where it's needed, parking would be available for the school and for the church across the street. So that's why we've come here. We went through public consultation. I did more consultation afterwards with the residents along Rita Valley Drive South in cars, and came forward with this motion. Construction is going to start shortly, and it's going to go into tender soon, so I wanted to get this put forward now. It won't impact the budget at all, because obviously sidewalks are more expensive than paved shoulders. So this is, yeah, it's a fairly minor thing, but I just had to bring it here because it's against the policy. Thanks.
Great. Thank you. On the motion, carried, adopté, merci. Councillor Midic, seconded by councillor Chernyschenko, with respect to Greater Goalway à l'aisse du Grand Boue, suspension of the rules, please. Carried. Councillor Midic, on your motion.
Thank you, Mayor. So we know that FIFA Women's World Cup starts June 6th. Get your tickets. But we're not scheduled to meet again until June 10th. And, you know, whenever we have a monumental sporting event, we like to do things like the Senn's Mile and things like that on Elgin Street. And the Glee BIA has confirmed their support of a spot similar to the Senn's Mile. So therefore, be it resolved that in recognition of the importance of FIFA Women's World Cup Canada 2015 to the City of Ottawa, city council approved the placement of commemorative blade signs designed in consultation with FIFA, formally identifying Bank Street from Isabella Street to Riverdale Avenue as Greater Goalway à l'aisse du Grand Boue until following the tournament finals on July 5th, 2015.
Great. So councillor Chernyschenko was seconding that because he's been in touch with the BIA. And on the motion, carried, adopté, merci, thank you. Do we have any other motions requiring suspension of the rules? Okay, notice is a motion for consideration at subsequent meeting. A vie de motion pour l'examiner à réunion subsequent. Councillor Harder has a motion she would like to table now. Seconded by councillor Shirelli.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It will be moved by myself and seconded by councillor Shirelli, who was one of the over 100 personal contributions to supporting the renaming of Southropine Park in Barhaven after Ken Ross, who was an amazing community leader in our community. And so on the 10th, I'll be asking for your support on that. And I am happy to say, and in fact, I'm very proud of the fact that a record number of people, we have over 1,500 people, took the time to participate, and over 100 and some that were sent in personally. Thank you very much.
That's a great initiative. Thank you, councillor. The next notice of motion is by councillor Shirelli, seconded by councillor Leeper, with respect to the IT Subcommittee. Councillor?
Thank you, Your Worship. It's a motion where staff is recommending, due to a busy legislative agenda, the report from the IT Subcommittee with respect to proposed 2015 to '18 term of council priorities be forwarded directly to council instead of through FEGCO to council.
Okay, we'll deal with that at our next meeting. The final one that I'm aware of, a notice is a motion by councillor McKenney, seconded by councillor Deans, please.
Yes, thank you, Your Honour. Again, this is another commemorative naming proposal for the Charlie Bowen Skateboard Park at McNab Community Centre, which will be reopening on July 4th. And it is to recognize this young man who died quite unexpectedly and prematurely in March with renaming of the skateboard park at McNab Community Centre, the Charlie Bowen Skateboard Park, so that we can... And this was actually supported entirely. There was absolutely no one who had any issue with this, so it was overwhelming support. So that we can put this on the meeting of June 10th, so that we can have everything prepared for the opening on July 4th of our new McNab Park and the new skateboard park.
Great, thank you very much. Are there any other notices of motion? No? Okay. Notice of intent from Ottawa Community Housing Corporation, avis de l'intention de la société de l'agement communautaire d'Autreuil. Notice of intent from the Ottawa Community Housing Corporation to hold the annual general meeting of the shareholder at the council meeting scheduled for June 10th, 2015. Motion to introduce bylaws. Councillor Tierney and Chernyschenko, please.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, that the bylaws listed in the agenda under motions to introduce bylaws through readings be read and passed.
Carried. Confirmation bylaw, councillor, please.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, that the following bylaw be read and passed to confirm the proceedings of the council meeting of the 27th of May, 2015.
Carried, adopté. Madam Deputy Clerk, are there any written inquiries? Adjournment, councillor Tierney?
That the proceedings of the city council meeting of the 27th of May, 2015, be adjourned.
Carried, adopté, merci beaucoup. Meeting adjourned.